Hello Mayor, hi Bob.
Hi Tom, how you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
Evening Tom.
Good evening everyone, thank you all for attending our BOC meeting tonight. I'm calling to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, October 27, 2020, 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call please.
Mayor LaHoozess?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr? He's not here with us yet.
He's excused.
He's excused, but I just talked to him, he's still driving, he's on now. He's not going to be, he's not close yet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Terapany?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Here.
Tonight's occasion will be given by the city attorney, following by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you Mayor. Our Heavenly Father, we pray this evening for the members of our armed forces serving in Afghanistan. We ask for their safety and that they are returned to their homes and loved ones as soon as their duties permit. Give comfort to their families and friends in their absence and help us remember the sacrifices that they have made. This we pray, amen.
Thank you.
The pledge allegiance-
A pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States-
The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible-
With liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, and now we're going to the public comments. On the items that were not going to be discussed this evening. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails were received.
Okay, Mr. Jump, do we have anyone that is wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And at this time, we do not have any raised hands, sir.
Okay, thank you. And we go to the consent agenda, item number one is the attorney fees. Johnson and Johnson, invoice 6759, 6760, and 6761. Item number two is a special event, movies in the park. Three is the award file number 210040, C J L hydrant, involve installation, repairs, and maintenance. Number four is the increase file number 200060, C A M trucks, buses, and vehicle. Parts new and rebuilt. And number five is to ratify the increase to the file number 200017. And C M, sequel source purchase of peers, fire operators, OEM parts and services. Number six is the increase file number 200062, N J L pumps and repair parts Myers. Number seven is to ratify change order number one, to bid number 19007, B J J Cedar Street Brick Pavement Rehabilitation. A Ferrer Street, Dupanelles Avenue. Are there any items that you'd like to pull?
Number seven.
Number seven, okay. Anything else? No. Okay, any comments of the items one through six? Ms. Jacobs, we go to the public comments for the items one through six, any emails?
No emails were received on this side.
Mr. Jump, anyone that is wishing to speak on those items, one through six?
If anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in. And we have no raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. The Chair will obtain a motion for the items one through six.
Motion number one through six.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozess?
Yes. We go into the item number seven. Commissioner Terapany?
Thanks Mayor. I really, it's not that big of a deal, I don't have much of an issue, it's more for my own edification, the board's edification. This project has been complete for some time now, to my knowledge. And I'm just curious why we're approving a change order after the fact and then also for such a little amount. So I'm just looking for some additional info as it relates to this item.
Thank you, Stafford Gorman, Mr. Licoris.
Yes, I believe we have Tom Function to answer that question. Tom, could you answer that question for me?
Yes sir, I hope everybody can hear me. Yeah, the project was finished ahead of time and we had an issue on the north side of the brick roadway. Where water was puddling in the gutter line. The contractor had pulled up the bricks a couple times and tried to get the flow correct, but the tolerance was so minimal that we couldn't quite get it. Even though the small puddle that was along the edge of the road met within FDOT requirements, we just weren't happy that the water was sitting there. And it would take about 48 hours for it to dissipate. So the contractor agreed they would come back in, install catch basin there, if we would just cover the materials. So the contractor came back in, excavated, installed the materials, and got it back in. Delay was pretty much on the contractor having time to come back and do the project. So it didn't-
Project, son.
Fair enough, thank you, Mr. Function.
Do we have any other commission comments on this item number seven?
I do Mayor, I do. Mr. Function, is that going to cover all the, there's been quite a few, I would say, observations down there. Kind of in the form of a complaint sometimes, but mostly observations with the ponding down there on the road. Is this going to address all of them that you know of, or the main one?
The main one, the main one.
Okay.
As you know, the tolerances are pretty, they're pretty close there. And you're going to have some puddling, but we do have in most of our roads and they should be minimal. But yes, that'd be the main one, we'll take care of.
And is this going to be a dry well, it's not hooking up to anything, is that correct?
It's, no, it's connected to the new system we installed, sir. It's not a dry-
I'm sorry, can you say that a little-
I'm sorry, it's connected to the new system we installed. It's part of the stormwater system that feeds down to Ferris.
Okay, thank you. I know just from observations and talking to the residents, I live up the hill from there and there's, I get comments all the time and and so far it's holding, except for the rain that's holding and for Commissioner Terapany, this has been an ongoing thing and I'm glad at least the city's going to attempt to do something on this, so we'll see how it goes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other commission comments? Here none now. We go to public comments, Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No email was received on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Jump.
Anyone who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we have no raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We need a motion for item number seven.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozess?
Thank you. That finishes the consent agenda, we go to the ordinance resolution. The items number eight, eight, A B, and eight C are related. The eight C is a quasi-traditional. Will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately, so now I would like to ask our city attorney to read the title and explain the quasi-traditional process.
Mayor, do you want me to read the annexation ordinance, starting with eight 2020-32?
Yes, uh huh, we do that one at a time, yeah.
Alright, so this is ordinance 2020-32, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida annexing 0.58 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest corner of Ankle Boulevard and L and R Industrial Boulevard, providing for findings and providing an effective date. The second reading will be held on November 10th, 2020. It's going to be published in the Tampa Bay Times with a map on October 28, 2020. We'll read the quasi-traditional procedures. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners in a, act in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact on the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances that the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and swear in city staff members first. And Ms. Vincent, are you going to be that staff member?
I am.
Okay, if you'd raise your right hand, swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, and I will go ahead and share my screen. And can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
So, this is applica, three separate applications. These are actually, have been initiated by the City of Tarpon Springs, this is city-owned property. Applications 20-117, annexing the property and from unincorporated Pinellas County. Ordinance, applications 20-118, amending the future land use map and the rezoning, and rezoning the property upon annexation. The subject property contains 0.58 acres, you can see on the screen, it's a sliver of property just to the west of L and R Industrial Boulevard, just south of Ankle Boulevard. The request is to, as we said, is to annex the property and to get it under our jurisdiction for the purposes of any future permitting and activity on the property. Amending the future land use map from the Pinellas County designation of residential urban to the city designation of transportation utility and a companion zoning of R P D from Pinellas County to the proposed designation of public semi-public in the City of Tarpon Springs, which is our normal normal zoning and land use that we would put on these types of properties owned by the city. One potential use of the property in the future is for parking or storage, this is a potential site plan concept. We may, this would actually have to go through a permitting process in the future, so this doesn't approve this, but it does lay the groundwork for being able to do this on the property without having a conflict of land use or zoning. The adjacent properties, you have the mobile home park to the east, which is residential urban and industrial park to the south. And then the unincorporated property is residential, directly adjacent. Zoning of mobile home park, and again, industrial on the surrounding, the unincorporated property is residential. There are no issues with the review criteria for annexation that does meet the minimum criteria for annexation. We find that, staff finds that it is consistent with our comprehensive plan policies and it does meet our review criteria for rezoning. Staff recommendation is to approve this, as presented in the staff report and the agenda backup. Planning and zoning board did recommend approval of this, they reviewed it on October 19th and recommended approval of ordinance 2020-32 annexing the property, as well as approval of 2020-30 for the future land use map amendment and 2020-31 for the zoning atlas amendment. With that, I will stop and answer any questions that you may have and I will unshare my screen.
Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Trask, I have a couple of questions that I would like to ask. One of the questions that I have is, Ms. Vincent, this property was purchased because we wanted to place some wells for the RO plant?
There is, there is a well site there and as we speak, yes.
Okay, but also was proposing this property to become parking lot for, for city vehicles. Is that big enough for that, and if it is, how many spaces you think we'll be able to get?
I don't know if Paul's on the, on the call here or not. It's a preliminary concept, I don't think it's, you know, I don't know exactly how many spaces you could get. You also have buffering requirements that would be required. That is one concept, I believe alternatively, they may just be looking to do some screen storage to allow some flexibility to RO plant, so Paul, I don't know if you can have anything to add to that or not?
Not, not just yet, he's not sworn in and we're going to finish all the questions of Renee first before we bring in another witness.
Sorry.
That's all I have for Renee, thank you.
Thanks Mayor. Any other commissioners have questions for Renee? I don't see any raised hands. We are the appla, the city is the applicant in this case, and so there is no additional parties. So Irene, can you tell me whether or not there are any emails or public correspondence?
There were no emails received on these items.
Okay, Mr. Jump, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on these items?
The ten will like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. So, Mr. Smith, I know that the mayor had a question for you. You're there now, I need you to raise your right hand and be sworn under, oh, you swear that the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, did you hear the mayor's question?
I did. And yes, I wanted to add Renee stated it correctly. Primarily, it's to get the site under city control because it is a well site, but also we want to leave room for the possibility of equipment storage primarily on that site. This would be things like our portable generators that we have gotten some of for emergencies and it's a secure location for us and it has the benefit of freeing up some room at the RO plant site for more solar, which is ultimately our goal. That's the extent of that, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Smith?
Yes, I do. Costa, Tom. Mr. Smith, the, I, I know that's conceptual at this point, but is that what you're proposing? Or into the future for funding, or is it just, I'm not sure why we're giving a reason for annexing this in? Or is there some legal reason or, that we have to give a reason of what the use is going to be for this?
I can't answer as to the legality of giving a reason. I was just answering the mayor's question about what ideas we might have for use in the future.
Well, I guess I was getting, the park, the idea of the parking lot, where did that come from?
Yes, that was something that staff at RO has, were challenged on the RO site for parking and space. So the length of that particular area, it was unutilized, it seemed like a compatible area to put a decorative vinyl type fence up, enclosed storage and store some equipment over there, like the portable generator.
The, I noticed in the plans, there's a stream of overhead lights, it appears to be, those are there now or they're not there? There, there looks like there's a fence, it's either there or it's not there, I can't tell from the plan whether it's proposed or something that's existing and it looks like some overhead lighting that's going to be installed. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
The last time I was through there, it looked like vacant right away to me. But I do know that that is part of the plan for the trail to be going through there, so that's why I say it's conceptual. It's something, if we can work it out where it works, then we'd like it, but no matter what, I think having that annexed in and any approvals we need to get later, we would do that.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea, I don't have an issue with the annexation. I was just trying to figure out how far down the road we were with these concepts that are being shown for the purpose of the annexation and I get the sense that we're not there yet on those.
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Trask.
Thank you Commissioner, any other commissioners or the mayor have any additional questions of Mr. Smith?
No.
Seeing none, Mayor, it's back to you for the commission's consideration.
Thank you. I'm asking again if we have any other commission comments or questions? If not, I will obtain a motion for, I remember eight, eight, the City of Tarpon Springs, the west southwest corner of L and R Industrial Boulevard and Ankle Boulevard, which is the ordinance 2020-32. The application 20-117 annexation, this is the first reading.
Motion to approve, eight A, ordinance 2020-32.
Second.
Ms. Jacobs, roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozess?
Yes. Next item is eight B, the ordinance 2020-30, the application 20-118, future land use. This is the first reading. Mr. Trask?
Thank you Mayor, this is ordinance 2020-30, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida amending the future land use map for 0.58 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest corner of Ankle Boulevard and L and R Industrial Boulevard, from land use designation RU residential urban to land use designation TU transportation utility and providing for findings, providing an effective date. The second reading of this ordinance will be held after state review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September 30th, 2020.
Back to me?
Yes Mayor.
Thank you. Again, I'm asking if we have any addition commission comments? If not, the Chair will obtain a motion for ordinance 2020-30, the application 20-118.
Motion to approve, eight B, ordinance 2020-30.
Second.
Ms. Jacobs, roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozess?
Yes. Next is item number eight, C, the ordinance 2020-31. This is the application 21-118 rezoning and, Mr. Trask?
Thank you Mayor, this is ordinance 2020-31, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for 0.58 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest corner of Ankle Boulevard and L and R Industrial Boulevard from Pinellas County R P D Residential Plan Development District, the City of Tarpon Springs, E S P, Public Semi-Public District and providing for findings and providing for an effective date. There will be a second reading of this ordinance after state review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September 30th, 2020. And Mayor, it's back to you on this one as well.
Thank you. We need a motion for the ordinance 2020-31, application 20-118.
Motion to approve, eight C, ordinance 2020-31.
Second.
Ms. Jacobs, roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozess?
Yes. Next is items number eight, excuse me, nine A and nine B and the L related. The nine B is a quasi-traditional. It will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. The item number nine A is the City of Tarpon Springs, 324 East Pine Street, application 20-118. The ordinance 2020-28, the future land use map, this is the first reading. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, this is ordinance 2020-28, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida amending the future land use map for 2.82 acres, more or less, of real property located at 324 East Pine Street, 410 North Ring Avenue, and 395 North Gross Avenue, from land use designation RL residential low and RU residential urban to land use designation I institutional, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. The second reading of this ordinance will be held after state review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September 30th, 2020. And Renee, are you going to be presenting on this?
Yes.
Okay, you've already been sworn in, so you're under oath at this point, you can proceed.
Thank you, and again, I'll share my screen quickly. And if everyone can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is application 20-109 from property at 324 East Pine Street, that we all know as City Hall. This is a city-initiated application. And really, this is somewhat past due. The uses that we have here are conditional use within the residential district that it's in now. So this will just make things a little bit easier moving forward when we need to do modifications or changes. As you know, we do have the city clerks, the new office on the horizon, so this will bring everything into, into alignment, if you will. The future land use designation was to be, is proposed to be changed from the current designation of residential low and residential urban to institutional and a companion zoning change from conditional residential mix and single-family residential to public semi-public. And again, the intent is to align the land use and zoning with the long-term utilization of the site. You can see the surrounding land use and zoning, to the north, we have the transportation utility land use on the the treatment plant. Primarily, everything else around the property is residential in nature. Again, the treatment plant to the north is public semi-public for zoning and then that will be the same zoning that would be on this property if approved as, and then you can see the surrounding zonings, again, mostly residential. We find that this is generally consistent with the review criteria and consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it's consistent with the rezoning criteria. And it's consistent with the rezoning criteria. And, uh, we do not, uh, have any issues with, with the, with the required review criteria for rezoning. Staff recommendation is approval of application 20 dash 109, uh, which includes ordinances 2020 dash 28, amending the future land use map to institutional and ordinance 2020 dash 29, amending the zoning atlas, uh, to public semi-public. Planning a zoning board reviewed this at their October 19, 2020 meeting and did recommend approval unanimously. Uh, with that, I'll stop and, um, I'll unshare my screen and answer any questions that you might have.
Any of the members of the commission have questions for Ms. Vincent?
Mr. Trask, I have one question for Ms. Vincent.
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Vincent, um, the new zoning will have any effect to the city clerks' new office we're about to build?
I will actually facilitate, uh, getting that. Um, we won't have to do a conditional use to expand, uh, the city hall facility. So it will be permitted by right at that point.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, so we'll go to the public now. Ms. Jacobs, any, uh, comment from the public emails or correspondence?
No emails were received on these items.
Thank you, Mr. John. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on these two items?
If anyone would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. We do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, it's back to the commission for consideration.
Thank you. Uh, if the commission doesn't have any comments, I will detain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You want just the first, uh,
Yes.
The ordinance first?
Yeah, this is for, uh, the nine A.
Yeah. Motion to approve ordinance 2020 dash 28.
Second.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany.
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis.
Yes. Next is the item number nine B, which is the ordinance 2020 dash 29 rezoning. This is the first reading. Mr. Trask.
Thank you. This is ordinance 2020 dash 29, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida for 2.82 acres, more or less of real property located at 324 East Pine Street, 410 North Ring Street and 395 Gross Avenue from CRM 7.5 conditional residential mix and R 70A, single family residential district to PSP, Public Semi Public District and providing for findings and providing for an effective date. There will be a second reading on this ordinance after state review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September 30th, 2020. So Mayor, it's back to you.
Thank you. Um, any commission comments? If not, the chair will detain a motion for the ordinance 2020 dash 29 rezoning.
Motion to approve ordinance 2020 dash 29.
Second.
Ms. Jacobs, roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany.
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis.
Yes. We're now going to the item number 10, which is a resolution 2020 dash 66, the application 20 dash 104 Eagle Creek Estates Final Plan Development at, uh, 685 and 687 East Klosman Road. This is quasi-traditional, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. I'm going to read the resolution, then I'm going to read the procedures again. This is resolution 2020 dash 66, a resolution, um, of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 20 dash 104, requesting final development plan approval for Eagle Creek Estates Residential Plan Development located at 685 and 687 East Klosman Road, providing for certificate of currency, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date. There was the reading of resolution 2020 dash 66 by title only. I'm going to read the quasi-traditional procedures. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity at a quasi-traditional hearing. It is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence of this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence that the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, uh, Ms. Vincent, are you going to be, um, making the presentation on this case?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So you've been sworn in. I see that, uh, Mr. Armstrong is here and Ms. Terapany is also here. I'll square in Ms. Terapany when we get to that point. Um, so go ahead and proceed with, uh, the city's presentation.
All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. And again, this is application 20 dash 104 for final plan development of the Eagle Creek Estates, uh, subdivision. I think the board is fairly familiar with this property. Uh, this is a proposed 50-unit, uh, residential plan development. Previously, uh, this application has been approved for annexation as well as preliminary plan development, um, and a, uh, as well as, uh, two land use amendments associated with this. So as I said, this is a 50-unit, single-family residential subdivision. Here you can see the overlay of the final site plan, um, over the aerial. Uh, they have provided for, uh, and met the requirements of the preliminary plan development. There is one, uh, additional waiver being requested at this time that was not previously, um, discussed by the board, specifically to the minimum, um, open space requirements for the development. So it's the site plan, that's the landscaping plan. Since the, since the preliminary plan development, um, one thing that was identified, the, um, that is necessary for the board's consideration is to consider a waiver for the, the minimum open space requirement of 25%. Uh, the applicant at this point is proposing to provide 16% open space. Um, it is important to note that the, you know, the, the primary reason for this is that, uh, the entire, uh, portion of the wetlands cannot be counted toward the required open space. Only 50% of it can. So, uh, they're actually providing more than would necessarily normally be required. Uh, they've also provided for, um, the tot lot on site, um, at the loss of a lot. So, um, staff recommend, staff is, um, supportive of the waiver request, um, as it's been presented. And I think Ms. Terapany will probably speak more to that, um, in a moment. Uh, the staff recommendation is to approve resolution 20 dash 66 for final development plan. Uh, the resolution does call for, um, set out the dimensional standards, the, uh, approval way of waivers as well as conditions. Um, there's an extensive set of conditions that, um, carry through from the preliminary plan development, um, and do now carry through to site construction and plan develop and final planning. Um, if you want me to go through those line by line, I will. Otherwise, I think I will rely on, um, the agenda backup that's been presented in the resolution. And if you have questions about specific conditions, uh, we can do that during question and answer. And with that, I will stop and I'll unshare my screen and we can, I'll answer questions.
Thank you.
Anyone from the commission have a quote, have questions for Ms. Vincent? Uh, Commissioner Donovan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Trask. Uh, thank you, Ms. Vincent, for the presentation. Could you just go in a little bit more detail as far as the waiver request goes? I know you said that they actually exceeded it. It just can't technically be applied. Um, would you mind giving more detail?
Yeah, let me, let me get, sure, let me get the more extensive, so. So the, the site, the total site is 15.3 acres. Um, so the total open space required is 3.85. Uh, they are providing 2.46 acres of open space, which includes the landscape buffer at the property's entrance, the mini park, uh, the wetland buffer, and then the 50%, 50% of the allowable wetland and stormwater areas. If you recall, there's a fairly substantial triangle area on, in the southeast part of the site that is all been put into preservation status, but they can really only count 50% of that land area toward the open space requirements because it's wetlands, it's the way our codes are written. So, um, so the applicant is requesting a remainder, a waiver for that remainder of that required 25%. Um, based on superior alternatives, protection of significant features and deprivation of reasonable use. Um, and so they did, in the backup, there is a little more extensive write-up that was provided by Ms. Terapany. So, um, if you need a little more information, I'll, I'll have to defer to her on the, on the justification.
That's good for me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I, I have one, uh, just a procedural, uh, issue with some of the conditions that we had asked for, such as the mini park. Um, the final, uh, plan for that, the details of it, that would be when later? At site plan or, or some, sometimes later? Uh, remember, we had requested that the applicant work with the recreation department at some appropriate time to develop a concept for that. And I know it's on private gated properties, so, uh, but nevertheless, I just wanted to, how, how procedurally is that going to work?
Um, there's nothing else that comes directly back to the board for review after, uh, except for the plat, um, a- after this point this evening. Um, but I mean, we can, you know, I think having that maybe as a condition of approval for the site construction permit that, um, the park, the, the proposed park be reviewed by our, um, Parks and Recreation staff, would that be acceptable?
I mean, it would be fine with me if it's acceptable to the applicant. I just, um, looking at it procedurally, I, I just, I, I'm sure it'll work out fine. I just will make sure we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is on that. There may be other issues that some of the other commissioners had, uh, brought forward as well, but the park was something that I had, uh, specifically requested. We may be able to wait till the applicant, uh, discusses it and we can get maybe clarification on that. That was all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. So, Mr. Armstrong, I know that you're here. You have an opportunity to ask questions of Ms. Vincent if you want to. Otherwise, I think that was the city's only witness. And do you have any questions for Vincent?
I don't have any questions. I'll just wait until it's time for us to make our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, the city doesn't have any additional witnesses, correct, Renee? Okay.
You're muted.
You're muted. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Uh, so with that being said, let's go ahead with Mr. Armstrong and the presentation of his case. And I know that Ms. Terapany is there. Why don't I go ahead and swear Ms. Terapany in in case she?
Thomas frozen, I believe.
Mr. Trask.
He has.
Are you back, Mr. Trask?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, he's frozen again.
Mr. Armstrong, would you please call Ms. Terapany to give her presentation?
I, I have a few remarks before I'd like to present Ms. Terapany to the, to the board, if you will, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead till, uh, Mr. Trask comes, comes back. Go ahead, continue.
Thank you. I think he's back now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. Um, I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, and we are located at 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 in Clearwater. And, uh, I represent the applicant here tonight. We are here on the final development plan. Uh, you know, we had a lot of discussion back and forth at the hearings for the preliminary development plan. I think we came upon a, a, a very nice plan to seem to, you know, work for the, uh, for the involved stakeholders. What we're presenting to you tonight is consistent with the preliminary development plan. We are requesting a waiver, uh, that, you know, Ms. Vincent touched upon. I know that Ms. Terapany has some observations about that waiver request that she would like to share with the board. And as it pertains to the discussion between Commissioner Vaticiotes and Ms. Vincent about, you know, the procedural question, uh, we would, the applicant would be comfortable with, um, working with city staff and, you know, Parks and Recreation Department to come on, come upon a, a solution that made sense for everybody. So that would be acceptable to the applicant, uh, you know, as suggested by, by this commission. And Ms. Terapany, can you, um, share with the board some of your observations with respect to our request for the open space waiver?
Yes, sir, thank you. Should I be sworn in, Mr. Trask?
Yes, you swear, you swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners Cindy Terapany. Terapany Planning Strategies at 128 East Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs. And I'm the planner for the project. Um, this project is, uh, substantially similar in almost every way, except for one issue to what you approved with the, with the preliminary plan. We still have 50 lots, single family lots, they're same size lots as was approved in the preliminary plan. And we're in compliance with all the requests the city commission asked us to do. Uh, we do have one lot, which is now the neighborhood park along the east border. Um, the road has been wide to 24 feet in width. We provided sidewalks on both sides of the road, as you requested, and we added parking on the street to provide for guest parking. We've confirmed that the, the road width and where the parking will specifically be allowed has been approved by the fire marshal during the preliminary plan process. The only difference between the preliminary plan that we approved and this final plan is the issue of the open space. And quite frankly, our team just misunderstood how to calculate it when we're in the, the preliminary plan stage. And so when the staff called it to our attention during this, uh, phase, um, and suggested that the proper way to deal with it was through this waiver process. Uh, first of all, it is a requirement of the RPD and it's 25% of the total site. So it's a full fourth of an entire site. On a smallish site of this size, it's only 15 acres, 25% of open space is pretty substantial and it's a pretty, um, high, high level to meet. Um, in this particular site, what we have done at your request, and we think it's a really good addition to the project, is to provide that neighborhood or mini park within the project, um, which is something that's not generally required in the city. It's not an ordinance, but we do think it's a good addition to the project. The waiver is really needed because, as Ms. Vincent referenced, the way the city calculates that open space and what they do and don't include, don't include, um, is, is almost a, an, uh, a penalty against us. So for example, we have 2.39 acres of wetlands. Uh, and we also have about two acres of a stormwater pond. Because we're preserving every inch of those wetlands, we're not impacting the wetlands. We're not asking to do any mitigation and we're preserving them through the plan amendment that you all recently approved. But that 2.39 acres doesn't count towards our open space, even though it starts to function as open space. It truly is open space. So you have this big overall arching goal in the city and, and most places, um, but certainly in the city of Tarpon Springs to preserve wetlands, but yet we're being penalized for it because it doesn't all count. If all of the wetlands and all the stormwater pond would count, we'd be over in the amount of, uh, wetlands, that, excuse me, the amount of open space that's provided. We have about over four acres. But under the city's definition, we are short by about an acre and a half. But we believe that the waiver is justified based on the things I've mentioned tonight and are in our application, the small size of the site and the 25% applied to that small size. Um, the preservation of the wetlands, it kind of acts as a disincentive or a penalty. And the fact that we do have an active, uh, neighborhood park, mini park within the project on to make up for, um, those issues as well. Um, the RPD code does allow for the city council to have the authority to waive, or when I ask you to waive it entirely, we're asking you to reduce it. Um, and so you do have the authority to do that as part of this RPD process. And we would respectfully request, um, a waiver of this, uh, one particular item, um, given the circumstances on this site. And thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Ms. Terapany?
If, if Ms. Terapany could state what the total percentage would be if we didn't have to, uh, half, uh, discount half of that, uh, wetland?
We got to count, uh, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Vaticiotes. If we, we're allowed to count all of the wetlands and all of the stormwater pond, we would have 4.8 acres, 4.85 acres of open space where 3.8 acres are required. And I can quickly calculate the percentage of that.
That while you're working there, that's a fairly traditional approach to calculating open space.
Yes, and if we calculated it, uh, in that method of using all of the opens, all of the wetlands and all of the stormwater pond, in addition to the other open space that we have, we'd have 32% open space on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I, I do want to follow up with the, uh, park. Um, if we could have that add as a, a, an additional statement in the condition for that park. Um, if, if that would be okay, Mr. Armstrong, if you could stipulate to that?
We will, we will so stipulate, Commissioner.
Thank you. That's it. Mr. Trask.
Thank you very much. This thing, no other questions. Mr. Armstrong, do you have any other witnesses you'd like to call?
No, sir. We have concluded our presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Jacob?
Yes, Mr. Trask? If I might just add one thing, we, um, negotiated, had a discussion with the staff about a condition that was revised slightly. Um, it's condition number, it's new condition number three, and I just, it's in your staff report. Uh, I just want to make sure that that new condition number three gets added into the resolution. It just is, uh, allowing us to, um, uh, remove the existing septic tank and the well, um, prior to CO, because we do have folks living, um, on the property today, and they need to continue using that until they, until the site work is done.
And that condition is already in the resolution.
Great. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Vincent.
Um, Mr. Trask, one other comment. Um, uh, actually, is this going to be the last time we see you until, um, we get to, uh, pulling a, a construction permit? Is that it, Mr. Armstrong? Are there other matters that are going to be before us on this subdivision?
I mean, I, I want to make sure I understand your question. I think what you're asking is, is this the last public hearing on this matter?
Yes.
And that going forward, uh, there will be no public hearing. That is my understanding of your process, Ms. Vincent.
The, the only thing remaining that will come back to the board will be approval of a final plat.
Final plat, okay. Which should be straightforward.
Yeah.
Right. Um, I, I just wanted to say, I wish we had a, a, a plan of where we started in all of this a while back, and, and we've come a long way with, uh, with the roads, the one sidewalk on the one side, no park, uh, the fences above the hill and, and things of that nature. Um, I, I think a lot has been pulled into this plan that we didn't have at the outset, and I just wanted to thank everyone's cooperation in this for, I think, it looking like a successful, uh, project for Tarpin Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Jacobs, are there any, um, public comments, emails that came in on this, on these issues?
No emails were received.
Okay. Mr. Jump, is there anyone in the public that wishes, would wish to speak on these agenda items?
If you'd like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. It's back to the commission for their consideration.
Thank you. The chair will detain a motion for Resolution 2020 dash 66, which is the application 20 dash 104.
Motion to approve, uh, Resolution 2020 dash 66.
Second. Okay, I just want to make sure.
With all the recommended conditions, Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Trask was speaking there. Mr. Trask, go ahead, please.
I just want to make sure that, I know that was stipulated too by Mr. Armstrong, but we need to revise the resolution to include that additional condition relative to the park issue. And so we just need the motion to include that additional condition. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. Um, move to approve Resolution 2020 dash 66 with the additional condition that, um, there'll be a statement, um, where the, uh, applicant has agreed to work with the recreation department in the final, uh, plan for the mini park that had been approved as one of the conditions.
Second. That sounds good. Okay.
Mayor, before you vote, I just wanted the, uh, opportunity to, uh, recuse myself as I have, uh, been consistent with this item throughout many, many meetings.
Thank you.
Well, we have, uh, motion in the second. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Next is item...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number 11A and 11B. They are related. It will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. The item number 11 is the River Bend Village Roadway and Utilities Resolution 2020 dash 67, Pioneer Developers. Uh, City Attorney, if you please, read the, uh, resolution.
Yes, Mayor. Um, Resolution 2020 dash 67, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, accepting tracks G, H, I, and utility track J of the River Bend Village plat as further described in Condition and Attachments A, B, and C, declaring tracks G, H, and I as public rights of way, accepting an easement from the Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida as described in Attachment D, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2020 dash 67 by title only.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Vincent, are you going to give us the, uh, staff report?
I will. Let me share my screen. So I think that will help. All right. Can everybody see the screen?
Not yet. Now we do.
Yes. Great. Um, yeah, this is, uh, one of these pictures worth a thousand words type of, um, applications that we're dealing with. So this is the last piece of the River Bend Village, um, project that needs to come before the board. Um, the, when this was, uh, approved and platted through Pinellas County, uh, because the county knew this property was going to be annexed into the City of Tarpin Springs, they did not want to take temporary custody, if you will, of the roadways. Um, so they actually required the applicant to plat the roads, which you see in the purple color, um, as, uh, actual tracts of land rather than, uh, calling them out as rights of way on the plat. So that is one issue, um, to be, and, and the city through accepted, through annexation and acceptance of this, uh, site plan, uh, have agreed to that the, that these will be publicly platted, uh, public roads, um, that the city will maintain, uh, along with certain utilities. So the purpose of this resolution and ordinance is to accept these tracts of land and as well some additional easements. And I'll, so I'll try to just walk through these. So tracks G and H are the purple tracks that you see. Track J, uh, this is actually, uh, the utility lift, lift station, uh, that the city is, uh, accepting for, uh, maintenance and responsibility. Track I is, um, this long yellow tract that is actually part of the L and R Industrial, uh, Boulevard. Um, and that, so that tract, the lift station and the roadways are all currently owned by the, um, Property Owners Association and/or the Homeowners Association of River Bend Village. The other thing that was uncovered during this process is that, um, Brady Road, which we don't fully see here, but this is the right of way, um, actually, um, was traversing through property that's owned by the State of Florida. Uh, so these red tracks that you see actually identify those areas. And so the State of Florida is actually providing, um, uh, an easement to the, to the city, uh, for the purposes of, um, the, uh, accommodating the Brady Road right of way, uh, in use. So the resolution will, um, allow the city to take possession of those tracts of land, um, and then abolish and the easements as well as, and then the ordinance, um, there's an ordinance that is associated with this tract of land, the, the long yellow tract that's identified, that's being dedic, being deeded to the city, uh, from River Bend. There's actually an easement that overlays, overlays that tract of property, um, that perfectly overlays it, that actually is to the benefit of the city that was obtained, uh, several years ago, um, as part of the construction of L and R Industrial. So th- this is a bit of a cleanup. The ordinance will actually vacate that easement, um, and that is on advice of the city attorney, desirable to clean up any kind of potential clouds on a title that might, might emerge, um, in the future. So that is a brief explanation. I hope that was clear. There's, it's an interesting set of, um, actions to take. Um, I'll stop sharing and I'll answer any questions that you might have as best I can.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Uh, I have a question. Are we about to accept ownership of the roads' utilities? Uh, do we know if the infrastructure has been built with the city's standards? Because a lot of subdivisions, they do not.
It has been built to city's standards. Um, it has been inspected, uh, by the city, and we are ready to take ownership of it.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Vincent, we're going to take ownership, but does that also mean we're taking, uh, maintenance responsibility as well?
For the, for the roads and certain utilities, all, the utilities except for stormwater that will remain with the association.
And that is, uh, effective, uh, tonight, I guess, is what I'm getting at. Is that correct?
Uh, once all the deeds and everything are executed, yes.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. LaCource, um, are we ready for that? Is that, you ready for that?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay. That was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other commission has any comments or questions to, uh, the staff?
Hi, Wonder.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Vincent, the diagram that you pulled up, definitely, uh, is a picture worth a thousand words. I'm looking at it in front of me, and it, for the life of me, I couldn't find the vacating, the 33-foot-wide easement overlying track I, and now I see that it's basically the same thing as track I. So just, I understand what you're saying, but just help me understand a little bit better. There's a, there's an easement that's already over track I. In order to clean it up, basically, we're vacating the easement, and then we're going to accept the, the 33 feet? I mean, it's presented, we're, we're accepting it, and then we're vacating it?
Correct.
Basically, we're vacating it, and then we're going to accept it back?
Uh, I think, I think the proper order is we're vacating it, I'm sorry, we're accepting it, and then we're vacating it, accepting the actual, uh, ownership of the strip of land, and then vacating the, the easement that's over top of it.
I understand. And it's just right there. So it has not, so Brady Road's going to remain open?
Correct.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is the applicant present?
So, Ms. Cole?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Cole, do you want to comment?
Katie, you're on mute.
I may be having some problems with, um, the audio there, but, um, I, I'm here to answer any questions, and if Katie can get on, that's great.
Do you have any comments to make, Mr. Stammas?
No, I think it's, uh, the staff has done a, a good job of explaining what's going on.
No.
Yeah.
Ms. Cole?
Yeah, Katie, you're breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can, yes.
I think Mr. Stammas, um, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you, yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yes, I, I just jumped on. Mr. Stammas is certainly able to answer any questions, and the staff provided all the explanations, but there's, um, you know, this is just the final step in the, uh, redevelopment of the site and the plat. And if you have any questions, we can certainly answer them.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments or questions to the applicant?
I just had one comment, Mayor. Um, I, I just want to also, um, e- express my, uh, pleasure at the way things are proceeding out there. The houses are going up, and they look very nice, and I think it's going to be a wonderful, uh, residential development out there that, um, um, I'm hoping we'll, I'll see more of that out there as well. Thank you, Mr. Stammas.
Do they ha, do we have any other commissions that like to speak, comment? Hear none. Uh, we now go to the public comments. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails on this item?
No email has been received.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on the item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, uh, the chair will detain a motion for the 11A, which is Resolution 2020 dash 67.
Motion to approve 11A, Resolution 2020 dash 67?
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Pani?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Item number 11B, the ordinance 2020 dash 33, the application 20 dash 129, vacate, uh, west 30 feet easement of, uh, L and R. Um, this is the first reading. City Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. This is ordinance 2020 dash 33, an ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning an easement as recorded in official records book, uh, 1800, make that 18022, page 1403 of the Pinellas County Clerk of Court, and being located along the west side of L and R Industrial Boulevard, and being comprised of the east 33 feet of lots 1 and 4, Teets Allotment Subdivision, as recorded in plat book H6, page 52 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County, Florida, of which Pinellas County was formerly a part, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. Um, there, there will be a second reading of, of this ordinance, uh, after state review. It was published in Tampa Bay Times, I'm sorry, I got the wrong list here. It, it, I think it's November the 10th, after, and was published to the Tampa Bay Times by title on September 30th, October, and October 7th, 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Trask, did you say it was ordinance 2020 or 2022?
It's, it's 2020 dash 33.
Okay. Just want to make sure we got the right number. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, we already discussed that. Uh, the chair will detain a motion.
Motion to approve 11B ordinance 2020 dash 33?
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Pani?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are now going to the item number, uh, 12. This is the Resolution 2020 dash 68, ratifying executive orders. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution.
Yes, Mayor. This is Resolution 2020 dash 68, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, ratifying Executive Order 2020 dash 35, extending the declaration of the local state of emergency to October 13th, 2020, and ratifying Executive Order 2020 dash 36, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to October 20th, 2020, and providing for an effective date year of. There was a reading of Resolution 2020 dash 68 by title only.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. LaCource, do you have any comments on that?
Just an extension of the emergency order as required.
Thank you. Do we have any commission comments? We go to public comments. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Anyone who would like to speak on the item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 68?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Pani?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. We're now going to the miscellaneous, item number 13, the internal auditor application evaluation metrics. Uh, it was placed on the agenda by, uh, Commissioner Vaticiottis. But before I go to, uh, Commissioner Vaticiottis, who placed this item on the agenda, Mr. LaCourte, you send us a package of nine applications with the selection criteria metrics and the tentative schedule. Would you please explain that, so we all be on the second page, um, on the same page?
Yes, I've got Jane Niff on our line, who's the architect of a lot of that. So, so Jane, if you would quickly go over that, please.
Yes. Um, I've inundated you all with a, a lot of documents the last few days, so, uh, you've seen this document before. I just want to go over basically the purpose of this, uh, matrix. Uh, it, it's used as a general tool, um, throughout the HR recruitment process. It's not uncommon. But what it does is it provides a tool for the initial screening of applicants. Um, it's, it's not intended to rank people in a final score, but it's basically to identify, uh, those applicants who may not, uh, meet the minimum requirements or perhaps, uh, less qualified than, uh, than others in the process. It also identifies those applicants that should move forward to the next step. It also identifies those applicants that should move forward to the next step in the selection process. There are some very salient reasons as to why we use one of these, because it provides a more objective process for the treatment of all applicants. You're holding them all to the same standard, and you're quantifying it. It does prevent, or sorry, provide a defensible document should there be any questioning of the selection committee's decisions, either at city level or even in a court of law. But fundamentally, it's here to assist the screening committee by providing a brief description of the essential functions and the core requirements required in this job, and they're taken directly from the job description. As far as the content, you have all of your core requirements and essential functions listed and columns that say, okay, yes, they have them, no, they don't, or there's an equivalency, because in the job description, it does provide for an equivalency should the selection committee feel that they should be given either full credit or partial credit. The last is comments and justification, so that, again, it is a fairly objective document. That concludes my presentation on the, the purpose and the format of the, the matrix.
Thank you, Ms. Niffen. Mr. La Couris, do you have anything else that you'd like to add before we go to commission discussion?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Thank you. Ms. Niffen, did you talk to every one of the commissioners today?
Yes, except for Mr. Carr.
Okay, and Mr. Carr's out of town, so maybe if he's watching, but thank you for going over that again. Mayor, there was some confusion as to far as how we're going to proceed. This whole started, this matter started with my just asking how many applications we had, and I got a actually Chief Carr or Chief Coaching called me. The city manager was out of town at the time, and basically told me we'd perceived nine and that they were going to go to the Budget Advisors Committee for their review. And I did not recall that that's something that was agreed to, and he recommended that I speak to our city clerk, which happened to be for the day, the Assistant City Clerk. So I spoke to her, and that was basically the way she saw, the minutes had not been published yet, so that was the way she saw the video that we agreed to it. Again, that wasn't my recollection, but it didn't really matter, because I just felt that this point, rather than kind of getting into a debate over it, just to bring it back to you one last time, for the commission to decide that this is the approach that we're going to take. From my perspective, I really did not have a preferred way. We could do it, the Pub Budget Advisory Committee could do it. But I honestly, honestly, after I've looked at all the nine applications, I think we've got three, maybe four that are real solid. In fact, those three, the top three, or at least the three that seem to be most qualified, are so close and that they're at the upper end of the salary range, if not exceeding our salary range, that we had offered. I think it would be best to get some set of eyes on there with some expertise in the, in the business community, and I think that the proper approach would be through the Budget Advisory Committee. And I also, when I spoke to Ms. Niffen today, I told her I wouldn't mind if they ranked them as well, so that we would get whatever their number is and let them let us know who they felt was the most qualified. It's not, but I'm saying this without some experience. I participated in the selection process for the external auditor. I believe we had two members from the Budget Advisory Committee on that selection. I may be wrong about that, but at least one was for sure. And I very much appreciated their insights and going through the packages and identifying who they thought was the best qualified. So given that, I think that might be the best way to go unless the commission feels otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm anxious to see the recommendations from the Budget Advisory Committee, and also I want to express my appreciation to all the members of the Budget Advisory Committee for doing this extra task for us. I had the opportunity to review very carefully all the applications using the criteria metrics that was provided by Mr. La Couris and the Director, HR Director, Jane Niffen. I found that to be very, very easy to use. It was actually a criteria metrics that taken from the job description functions as of the internal auditor, and I found that to be a good tool. So I am anxious to see the recommendations we get from the Budget Advisory Committee, so we can have a a public hearing to finalize the process and make that selection for the internal auditor. So I'm good with that, and I'm looking forward to the second, to the next step. Commission Tera Pani?
Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, I'm also unfavorable regarding the Budget Advisory Committee reviewing the applications. I think it's always good to have a second set of eyes, and those are business-like-minded people, so I'm fine with that.
I'd just like to say that Commission Tera Pani was the first chairman of the Budget Advisory Committee when we first created.
Here, here.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I always, just want to thank staff, Ms. Niffen, for reaching out in advance. I'm happy with the process as presented by staff. Again, I'm happy to use it as a tool. I think it's a wise tool. And then obviously, you know, if somebody scores a, you know, fifteen, somebody scores a fourteen, then we get to the live interviews. You know, I think that's where those will really start to take hold. So I'm happy to use it as a tool, and I'm glad that staff presented it the way they did, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotes, you have anything that you'd like to add?
I would, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that whatever we decide, we could, we could either agree or not agree on a ranking. And then I do have a question as far as the, again, it's a procedural thing. Once the ranking or once the selection comes back to us from the Budget Advisory Committee, and we've got this schedule that Ms. Niffen has laid out for us, and I guess we're going to have to talk about that tonight as well. Is that right, Ms. Niffen, to confirm that for you? Okay.
That's correct, thank you.
And then, and then as part of that, I would like to, as I mentioned, we've, we've, it looks like we've got some pretty well-qualified people on there. I would, obviously, I'm not a business-oriented, I'm not an auditor or CPA or anything like that, but they just appeared well-qualified. Their salaries reflect that as well, where they are right now. And I really think that we need to kind of think about and maybe discuss, not, not necessarily tonight, but procedurally, I mean, do we, well, let me just ask Ms. Niffen, Ms. Niffen, when, let's say we get three finalists and we pick one out of them, and is that the time that we decide that's when we're going to make an offer, including the salary, or is that something that's done to all three of them ahead of time? Or is there part of the negotiation to figure out who we're going to make the offer for, to?
I think your first, the first task is to select the appropriate candidate, and at that point, you can discuss amongst yourselves how you want to go about negotiating with them, whether you want to do it yourselves or whether you want staff to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be the smart thing, because I told Ms. Niffen today, I really didn't want the salary to weigh in at this, at this point with the selection process. I think that would be the best way to go, so thank you. Just the only thing that would be, Mayor, would be the ranking, whether we would want to ask the Budget Advisory Committee, whether we want them to rank them as well.
Ms. Niffen, would you please talk to us about the tentative schedule that you provided to us this afternoon?
Yes, the, obviously, the, the first two steps have been completed. The applications have been received and forwarded onto the Budget Advisory Committee for review. They will be meeting on Thursday to make their final selections, to recommend to you who should be interviewed. Now, what comes next is, once we have a shortlist, HR does take the opportunity to do background checks and reference checks, because we do not want any surprises. So that would hopefully be completed by November thirteenth. Then the city commission, I'm sorry, I've got the, I need to go back. I have given you the wrong tentative schedule. Please excuse me, I need to find the correct one.
Okay, you confused, forget it.
We've had so many of them. The fourth step involves the budget advisory making their recommendations, and then it comes back to you as the Board of Commissioners to actually make the decision as to what you want to do and the actual timeframe that you want to, that you want to do it in. The documents do specify, let's see, they do specify the specific dates that, because it has to be a public meeting, the dates that would be available when there are no other meetings scheduled would be December first. The December, let's see, is it the tenth?
The tenth is the discussion by the board.
Yes, that's correct. November tenth is the discussion by the board as to how you want to proceed from there. The tentative dates for the actual interviews would be the first, the third of December, and the tenth of December.
Okay.
And then everything beyond that is to be determined as it unfolds.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Niffen. I'd like to ask our city attorney, Mr. Trask, a question. Mr. Trask?
Yes.
Okay, on November tenth, we're going to have a public hearing to to look at the, to actually to interview all the candidates that are going to come before us. This is going to be a public hearing. We're also going to have a public comments as well. Is that right?
It's, it's not a public hearing, it'd be a public meeting.
Meeting.
Yeah, so whenever the commission meets, it's a public meeting. And yes, the public will have an opportunity to give comment, either in that portion of the meeting at the beginning where you allow for public comment, and you may allow for public comment as well when you get to the particular agenda item dealing with the auditor. So, but, but yes, the public will have an opportunity to speak.
I have a point, point of order, Mayor, on that. You said that we would be interviewing the candidates at that time?
Well, according to what we have is, on November tenth, BOC review of recommendations made by the BAC and makes decision on candidates to interview.
Right, but we wouldn't actually be interviewing them that night. We're going to interview them at some other point. We're just going to agree that the, whatever it is, the three finalists or whatever, is the three that we would like to proceed with, and then we would interview them individually at a later date and a method to be determined, I believe. Is that correct, Ms. Niffen?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct, sorry.
Thank you.
So, so that'll be on December first or December third, December tenth. I guess, Mr. La Couris, you're going to find out what's the availability of each board member?
Those are the three available dates. I wasn't sure on exam schedule, so I left the Wednesdays out. There's two Wednesdays, depending on exam schedule. But those were the dates that we don't have a conflict with another meeting, those three dates. So probably at the meeting the tenth, you decide on which, which of those dates you'd want to do the interview. The obvious one is the off Tuesday, which would be a Tuesday, but there's also those other two Thursdays that are available with no meeting if Tuesday's bad. So those are just the only nights that we can meet and not have a conflict with another meeting or a schedule. So you would choose one of those, you know, you would choose one of those three dates for your interview process.
Well, let me ask our, my fellow commissioners, do you know what days you'll be available, if you're going to be available on Tuesday, December first?
I personally am not sure which days I'd be available yet, just because, like Mr. La Couris mentioned, those are exam dates for me, for school. So I'm not quite sure, but I will definitely find out by the November tenth meeting if, if you can give me that leeway and.
Yeah, okay, if you please let Mr. La Couris know as soon as you can. Commission Tera Pani?
I'll be gone the tenth to the fifteenth.
Okay, so we, the two days that you're available is the first and the third. Right?
I guess.
Okay. Well, I'm available both days. I don't know what advice Mayor Carr, because he's still driving down to Tarpon. Commission Vaticiotes, do you have a, an idea when you'd be available?
I, I don't have anything planned, Mayor. Whatever it is, it's fine, thank you.
So you're working for a good guy then, huh? You're working for a good person, let you get, like me, retired.
Right. Actually, I do work for somebody, but she's, she's a hard taskmaster too, so. It's my wife. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. La Couris? Any other comments on that?
No.
Okay, again, I would like to thank Ms. Niffen for the work that she's been doing, helping us out. I think it's great, and appreciate the criteria metrics she was able to provide us. This is. I guess it would be better if we had a motion that we all agree with the criteria and also that that the Budget Advisory Committee will evaluate all these applicants that will bring us back with a shortlist.
I, Mayor, I would prefer to have a motion and a vote on that, just from the.
That's what I said. Yeah, that's what I just said. That's what I just asked, yeah.
Are you waiting for a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve, have authorizing and having the Budget Advisory Committee review the applicants for the internal auditor, and I'm going to add the condition on there that they provide us with a ranking, unless another commissioner has an objection, and I can modify that.
Honestly, I don't have a problem to provide us a ranking, because even so, they were still going to be interviewed by us anyway.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any, any comments before we go to roll call? Ms. Jacobs? Roll call, please. Excuse me, before we go to that, we need to go to public comments. How do you go to that? I'm sorry. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails are received.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone that is wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Marla, who's this?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointment to appointing the zoning board. Well, we have a vacancy to fill for a regular member. This term expires October first, two thousand twenty-three. We can move up the alternate Mr. John Koulianis to this position, or we can select a person from the list. And also, we need to, we can reappoint Mr. Simon, Mrs. Tabropulos, Mr. Kouskoudis, and Mr. Morgan, or we can select people from the, from the list that is provided to us.
Mayor, just for clarification?
Yes.
One would be for the reappointment, so you would have to do that one. Number two, you would either have the selection to move up Mr. Koulianis or appoint from the list below for the regular member. If Mr. Koulianis is appointed, then another alternate would need to be selected.
Correct. Yes, we're going to do that in two steps. It would be a lot easier to do that. The first thing that we'd like to do is to to fill the vacancy that we got available as for regular member. My preference is to move up Mr. John Koulianis to this position, and then and then select one of the applicants from the list that was given below. Commission Tera Pani?
You want to name the alternate now that you would select, Mayor?
Yeah, if we would, yeah. Yeah, if we would, yeah, if we wait, if we get someone from the list.
So if we're gonna make Mr. Koulianis the regular member, then I would suggest making George Andriotis the new alternate.
Thank you. Commission Donovan?
I agree with that.
Commission Vaticures?
Yes, Mayor, that's fine. Thank you.
It's fine with me, too. Okay, the next uh portion of these is to uh is to reappoint uh Mr. Simon, Mrs. Tabropulos, Mr. Kuskudis, and Mr. Morgan, or to select people from the list.
That's just for a reappointment, Mayor.
That's for reappointment, yes.
Just the ones that are listed.
Uh?
That's just for a reappointment for the ones that are listed.
Yes, but we don't have to reappoint them unless we want to select from the from the list, correct? Commission Terrapani?
Um, I'm good to just reappoint.
Commission Donovan?
I'm good with that. Are you looking for two separate motions on this as well, Mayor? One for the reappointment and then?
Well, we could combine them both together later if you would.
Okay.
Uh, I I didn't hear what you just said, Commissioner Donovan. Will you agree with the reappointment?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commission Vaticures?
Yeah, I um, I I think those four reappointments have done an excellent job, and I don't have an issue with reappointing them. I think they deserve to be reappointed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I also agree with that. Uh, I am in favor to reappoint uh Mr. Simon, Mr. Tabropulos, Mr. Kuskudis, and Mr. Morgan. They're doing excellent job for the planning of the zone, so I uh we need a motion for that.
Motion to uh reappoint the uh five individuals and also to uh move Mr. uh Koulianis from alternate to the regular position and to appoint uh Mr. George Andriotis as an alternate.
Second.
Okay, just for clarity, there's only four.
Four. I I amend my amendment, uh, amend my motion to reflect four of those individuals. Shall I state them by name or?
That's not necessary. I just want to make sure that we all understood that there were only four reappointments, and those are the four that the mayor has mentioned today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to public comments. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails are received.
Mr. Jem, anyone who's wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on the side, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. And we already have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapani?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number fifteen, uh, appointment to Board of Adjustments. Well, we have in a usual situation, the terms of four regular members and one alternate member expired at the same time on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. And according to our land development code, shouldn't have only two terms expire in one in in one in one year. So before, in in order to correct that, um, recommendations is right below that, to rea- to reappoint uh Joanne Reich, Chris Rowoski, uh Jackie Turner, and Mr. George Boris and Steve Davis. Uh, I will uh ask Mrs. Jacobs to explain the uh the logic behind the way you said. Uh, would you please explain that to us?
Sure. Um, the reason uh well, one is to correct it. Uh, and as you're aware, this board does not have term limits. Uh, when we come back with a work session in January, that's uh one of the items we'll be discussing would be term limits for all boards. Um, so currently, the code allows for someone to serve a maximum of ten years currently. Um, so what we did is we put the people who have already served the longest and going on their third term, which would be a full nine years, to the lesser terms. So when we come back in January and correct this, we could uh start filling the positions to the correct term limit. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Commission Terrapani? Do you support the recommendation that we have?
To reappoint the five board members as stated below?
Yes.
Yes.
Commission Donovan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also support reappointing the five members. I did just have a question for Ms. Jacobs real quick, and sorry to put you on the spot.
Sure, yeah, I guess, go ahead.
For for that work session, is that work session going to be assessing all the term limits for all of our boards? Because I know we just ran it through like a week ago. Okay.
Uh, term limits and other items as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commission Vaticures?
I'm I'm uh I'm fine with Commissioner Terrapani's uh uh description of it, uh going with what we have below.
I also agree with that as well. Um, may I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to reappoint Joan Reach, Chris Rbowski, Jackie Turner, George Boris, and Steve Daisby's to their current positions.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails are received.
Mr. Jem, do we have anybody online that is wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on the side, then please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapani, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, next is item number sixteen, appointment to uh Court Enforcement Board. And we have no applicants. So we must reappoint uh we Julie Wade, Thomas Weeks, and Sonny uh Norfleet. Commission Terrapani?
So moved.
Commission Donovan, any comments?
No, just a second.
Commission Vaticures?
No comments.
I also agree with that. Uh, Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails are received.
Mr. Jem, do we have anyone that is wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. We do have a raised hand at this time, sir.
Okay, sure.
Panayotti Kulyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. I think this is a very important day discussing the reappointment of the Code Enforcement Board. Um, I think you guys all passed this stuff a little way too easy because you all both know what the you all know what the Code Enforcement Board is. Right now, it's been a board of complacent people. It's created a yes-man mentality where we have one officer who is picking on certain citizens in the city of Tarpon Springs. It's evident as the whistleblower information. You guys have all of it, as well as other information documented by other attorneys who were harassed. So the point I'm trying to get at is this Code Enforcement Board isn't made to punish people with fines. It's made to help that people comply. So when you guys stack thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars on people, you don't do it because you want them to pay. You do them because you want to buy them out, and then you decide on to to waiver the fines for the next person who's in line. That's why one of your commissioners smirked last time when I brought it up back in April. So Mark, I want to say shame on you, as well as the mayor. You guys are all complicit to this crime. It's a money racket that you guys used to pick on certain citizens in the city of Tarpon Springs. You guys send an officer out there who's not doing code enforcement anymore. He might be doing the paperwork behind the scenes, but he shouldn't be out there dealing with people or anything like that because his his testimony is not credible. So the point is, what is the board going to do about all this? Are you guys going to let certain individuals pick on the citizens of Tarpon Springs? You guys go find citizens that have Brazilian pepper on their property, but yet you guys have Brazilian pepper all over city property everywhere. I mean, the hypocrisy is something else. So at some point, I'm going to push for this issue because I know in my heart, this is the right thing to fight for. Soon, we're going to have a new Code Enforcement Board. The yes-man mentality is going to go out the window. I know we have a new appointment to the to the board. I will ask that lady, please do what's in your heart. Do not pick on certain citizens. Do not be part of this money racket. You know, Mr. Trass is just doing his job, but all those hours built towards Mr. Trass, it's a lot of money that are again spent on our taxpayer dollar. So which commissioner or the mayor is going to be brave enough to bring up all the harassment fines that certain individual were getting and have them wiped away, or at least settle for a reduced reduced amount? So moving forward, Tarpon Springs isn't going to be used to pick on certain people. It's self-evident. If I got to read every count from the one whistleblower information from um Mr. Patsalitis's account, I will do it. I'm tired of watching citizens get picked on, and I want to make sure moving forward, this does get corrected. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you. I'd like to repeat what I stated earlier that we have no new applicants. If anybody was so interested to serve, why we have no applications? Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapani?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number seventeen, which is the appointment for uh Housing Authority Board. And we have two vacancies. We have we had to fill two vacancies, and we can select the two people from the list. Uh, we also have to reappoint uh Mr. Garvey and Mr. Wellman. Commission Terrapani?
Um, let me just go to that, Mayor.
Well, you have no choice. You only got two people.
So are if we have no choice, are you asking for a motion?
Well, yeah, because seems like uh uh we have two vacancies and we only got two applications, and also to uh reappoint the two people that uh they need to be reappointed, Mr. Garvey and Wellman.
So we we're going to reappoint Dennis Garvey and William Wellman, and then we're going to appoint two other people based on the list below?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess I would move to reappoint Dennis Garvey and Henry Williams and appoint Arlene Sullivan and Donna Pentrack.
Pentrack.
To fill the unexpired term of Joan Tobia and Teresa Kandodakis.
Second.
Commission Donovan?
Second.
Commission Vaticures?
That's fine. Thank you.
And it's fine with me, too. Um, Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails were received.
Mr. Jem? Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on the side, then please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir.
Okay.
Panayotti Kulyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. I want to reply back to the mayor in regards to the Code Enforcement Board.
The item that you need to discuss is the appointment of Housing Authority. Is that what you're talking about?
Nobody wants to apply for the Code Enforcement Board because you guys are your own clique. Once Mark Lacourse and you guys are gone, we're going to find good-hearted people.
The we need you to comment on the uh Housing Authority Board. That's what we're talking about right now.
Good-hearted people will join the Code Enforcement Board when it's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jem, do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
Anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. We do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapani?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regularization agenda, and we go to staff comments. Police Chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney?
Go raise.
City Manager? Mr. Laquers?
Not a good time, Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Commission Terrapani?
No comments, Mayor.
Commission Donovan?
I'll second that. Go raise.
Commission Vaticures?
Here, I've got a few comments. Thank you. Um, I had uh given the uh City Manager a heads up to see if we can get a status on the uh Island of Evgina with the the Sister Cities Program. Um, I tried to uh uh get something from the Sister Cities uh Committee and Organization, but uh not heard anything back. Do you know of anything, Mayor?
Of course I do. I can uh report to you. Uh, as you know, uh, we received five applications, actually five requests from different cities that they wanted to become our sister city. Uh, the Assistant City Committee recommended to the B O C to approve three cities to be to develop our partnerships. That was Idrah, Elida, and Hanya. And we're hoping that we're moving forward to signing soon, providing the conditions of the coronavirus who allows us to do so. Well, the coronavirus numbers in Greece have been increased to a point that the process has been delayed. Uh, but as I stated uh in the past, we appreciate the interest of Egina to become our sister city. We sent a letter to the uh to the mayor and copy to the B O C. That was uh August fourteen, indicating that at this time, we are in process of development partnership on the uh three sister cities, which I mentioned earlier, and we're looking forward to be adding Egina in the later time. Uh, you you must know that the process it takes, it's like time-consuming because we have to go to Greece to those I uh to those uh cities, and they have to come here, and also development, we have to develop programs. So at this time, that's what we stand. We have three cities that we need to uh complete the signing and develop programs, and then we're going to be adding more sister cities on.
You you said we've sent the mayor of Evgina a letter?
Yes, and uh you should got uh it was uh the B O C, it was copied. That was August fourteen.
Okay, I'll I'll see if I can find that. Uh, thank you. Um, I I just um, the reason why I'm asking, I'm getting some feedback from Evgina through some of our residents. They're actually staying there right now, and uh I'm not sure that they received the letter that you're speaking of, but I'll I'll make it a inquiry directly with them to see if they uh to confirm that they've received it.
Yeah. Uh, right now, uh, we on a stage deal because the virus numbers in Greece have been increased to the point that we can't do anything.
Right.
Process is stopped.
Okay. Um, Mayor, I've had some discussions with a couple of members of the P and Z Board, and there seems to be some some, well, a couple of observations and and kind of kind of inquiries to me that I can't um answer by myself as one commissioner, but I guess the discussion circles are it uh it surrounds the idea that um some or many, I don't know yet, and that's what I was going to ask, their recommendations come forward uh for approval, and we deny the applications. And and uh I guess there's some concern with regard to their effectiveness or what their purpose is. So what I'd like to do, uh, if I can get agreement with the um uh City Commission is to um, I'm not sure if Ms. Vincent is here, but uh City Manager Lacourse, I'd like to get uh a kind of a tally over the past year of uh the number of uh applications that went to the P and Z, their recommendation for approval or or denial, and then also how we acted on those applications, just to see what the percentages are. I have no idea. I couldn't answer that. I I know there's been a couple with the uh vacation homes or tourist homes, and and I understand that we we look at things maybe a little differently, but they there's some suggestion that there's some other areas as well. So um if if the commission doesn't have a problem with it, if we could do that. The other thing is, I, what, what's the status of the historic preservation board guidelines? Is that something that we put on hold or I, the last I heard that there was something that's going to happen with them, maybe with a consultant or, or maybe not? I know Vice Mayor Carr had asked for a joint meeting with the H P B at some point in the past. Obviously, that hasn't happened and but do we have a status of that?
I can get that for you.
Okay, if you could copy the entire commission, I'm, I'm sure it's of interest to them as well, and of course, Vice Mayor Carr. I, I saw Commissioner Terapany's email today about the length of meetings and things, and believe me, I I'm very sympathetic to that. The one thing that I, I, I've observed, and this has happened a couple of times in the past. First, well, let me ask, is there some format of the meeting process that we follow? Is there a requirement that we do presentations first and ordinances and resolutions towards the end and then discussion items? Ms. Jacobs, I don't know if you could answer that question or if there's somebody else that can answer that?
I'm more than positive it is in our code.
It, it is in our code? Okay. The, the one thing that, that, some of the meetings that we've had in the past, for example, the Eagle Creek and also the the North Anclou Phase Two out on Keystone, we had a couple of those meetings. We had several back-to-back staff informational presentations, and then we got moved into the wee hours, yeah, midnight, close to midnight. And by that time, hearing these quasi-judicial items, which by that time, I think a lot of us are tired, I, I would think that that's not a healthy or good thing to do. And and I know some of us has brought this forward. I know I've spoken to the city manager privately about this, but I really like to do something formally to cut down the number of these staff informational presentations that we have when we have complicated agenda items. I don't know that those are critical or urgent, and they could certainly be deferred to other meetings rather than stacking them up and, and hearing some of this stuff. For example, in the case of, I think it was Eagle Creek, we couldn't even hear Mr. Armstrong. We had to come back the next night, for example. And in the meantime, they've got their engineers, their consultants all standing by, and we couldn't, we couldn't hear them. So I want to be especially sensitive to that, and I'd like to get the commission's thoughts on that, whether they agree or not, and if they do, I'd like to to take a look at our, our ordinance and see what we can do. I know, Mayor, you are going to be looking at the rules of procedure concerning our, our meetings, and I'm not sure what the status of that is, but I, I really like to do, I'd like to change something formally to make it easier for us.
That's going to be sometime in January, I believe.
Okay.
Mrs. Jacobs, send Mr. Trask to work on that as well.
Okay. Does, does any of the other commissioners agree with that? What, what I just said as far as the number of staff presentations that, that get just heaped on top of one or the other, and then we, we wind up?
If I could say.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Lacouris. Go ahead.
If I could say, I pretty much heard y'all say that when it happened, and that's why you've seen these agendas, not, these recent agendas not have those. So I thought, I thought we already talked about it, and you've seen agendas more scrutinized closely with those issues, not on there like that.
I'll just, I, maybe I've misunderstood Commissioner Terapany's email, but I, I thought that there was a little bit of a sense that we could be a little more effective with our time at our meetings, which I agree with on that. But if, you know, I guess we can address this again if the commission doesn't want to do anything formally as part of the the other part of this, which, which not just the informational. I, I don't understand why, for example, tonight, we had two, we had a quasi-judicial hearing on some city manners, matters. It could have gone longer, I don't know, but we put that before the, for example, the Eagle Creek quasi-judicial, which could have gone longer as well. Was there a reason why we do that and and let these other people wait? Or is that just happened to be coincidental for this evening?
That would just quizz the hell for this season, but we can, we can take that into consideration and make sure we look at those more closely.
Yeah, I, I saw their engineer was there, Ms. Terapany was there, Mr. Armstrong was there, and then, of course, Mr. Stamis and his attorney, Ms. Cole, was there as well. And then we had our items which were fairly straightforward. I, I'd like to see what we can do about putting those ahead of what city business anyway. So I think that was it.
Vaticiotis?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, I just pulled it up, and it is part of our code. It's two dash one twenty-two, and that would be, chapter two is also coming back at the workshop in January.
Two dash two twenty-two?
Two dash one two two.
One two two. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. That was all the comments I had tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I'd like to comment on the memo that we got from Commissioner Terapany. The next meeting that we have is only two items, two presentations, and and a BOC discussion. So two hours, that should be plenty of time to be able to accomplish that. So I, I'm in favor, and I, I, I support the request of Commissioner Terapany that it shouldn't take more than, it shouldn't, it shouldn't take more than that two hours to do that. And in regards to the meetings, as I said a couple of meetings ago, that I received several emails, not emails, but several phone calls from people saying that the meetings, the BOC meetings are too long, and our discussions, we take too long for our discussions. And that's why I ask if it's possible for our comments to be more direct and to the point whenever we can. And I'm sure we can get information earlier from the staff, so it wouldn't take us long. So many people can wait till, you know, all night to be able to listen to the meetings and be able to participate as well. So this is a request from the people. So I.
Sure, I understand, Mayor. Are you saying you want to limit the meeting next Thursday night to eight thirty, or you're just saying we should try our best?
I will support, I will support the request of Commissioner Terapany that two hours should be more than enough time to, to discuss two presentations that one is the planning project priorities by staff, and the, the second presentation that will be given by you. So in discussion we're going to have. So two hours, it should be more than enough time to do that.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree, but I, I don't want to at this point decide we're going to cut the meeting off at eight thirty. I mean, this thing's been kicked down the, the streets since March. You and, and in my email today, I pointed out that you and Vice Mayor Carr brought up this process back in two thousand and nineteen, and we haven't gotten anywhere on it. So from my perspective, I think it's an extremely important thing that at least three commissioners, I'm sure Commissioner Donovan is on board with this as well, I would hope, although he, you know, his concern, which is what I would say later, and I provided that information, is resident concern, and I've demonstrated how that residents are also involved in that process. So I'll, I'll, from my part, I think it's going to be brief, but I don't, I, I'm not sure, Ms. Vincent's, I saw hers. She had a memorandum and then a thirty-seven-page presentation. Maybe that's a sample, and she's planning on saying something else from, I believe it was Fayetteville, Georgia or North Carolina. I can't remember which one. And I, you know, this is, I will just wait to hear from her. I, I'd love to hear from her, but I don't necessarily at this point want to limit it to eight thirty. We, and of course, it's a workshop, so our residents aren't going to have an opportunity to talk. So I guess that's a point, but nevertheless, I, I just think it's an important meeting to, to limit that time right now, tonight.
Commissioner Donovan, do you have, you want to provide your input with that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I definitely agree. I, first, I just want to address your, your previous point about it being a shared responsibility between both the board and staff to limit the meeting time, and I, I really agree with that. I think, you know, I'm personally responsible for some of it as well. I think as a board, it's, it's a shared responsibility. I think the past few agendas have shown improvement in terms of, you know, maybe not having so many, you know, discombobulated out of order, maybe not being the longest agenda. But there's also the board aspect where we need to get more information in advance, make our questions clear, and not go off on different tangents about things. So I do agree with that, Mayor, up to your first point. And to the second point about this meeting, this upcoming Thursday, I'm happy to limit it to eight thirty. If there's more workshops or, you know, community input in the future, which I'm sure there will be, we can address that at another time. But just to get the initial input from the board as far as what they would like to see, I mean, if we can't come to that conclusion in two hours, then I don't know what we're doing. So I'm happy to support limiting it to eight thirty.
Thank you. Seems as we have a consensus to have a two-hour meeting on Thursday, October twenty ninth, from six thirty to eight thirty. Commissioner Vaticiotis, do you have anything else that you'd like to comment?
No, Mayor, I, I don't. And, and like I said, I don't disagree with Commissioner Terapany, but I just don't think that ought to be a blanket policy that we we just accommodate these timeframes without even getting into the meeting first. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to comment that the Ohi Day this year would be celebrated, would not be celebrated as usual because the coronavirus restrictions that we have. And I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge one of the most important days of the year for the Greeks around the world. This is the day that very important day that we remember and honor in the sacrifice of the people that fought for their freedom during the World War Two. So I am very sad that this year we will not be able to celebrate that. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting, and it's adjourned at eight twenty-seven P M. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
All right, thanks, guys.